As always, we'll start with the pledge.
If I'm not going to have everybody stand up, I'd like to introduce our students who'll be leading us in the pledge tonight from Mrs. Grove's class. Addie Lane, Alyssa Lunsford, and Gavin Jossich. Students, if you'll go ahead and take it away.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I believe the committee's statement already.
Mr. Mathers?
Here.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Here.
Mrs. Dahl?
Here.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Here.
Mrs. Banner?
President.
All president accounted for, sir. We have a forum this evening.
Okay, very good. Well, committee reports, we have one here report, Athletic Council report, Sam.
Yes. A couple of weeks ago, on March 7th, Athletic Council met. You have the significant items on the agenda. Miami Valley League bylaws will be presented and approved at the main league meeting. We're looking at using, you probably will see something from the Athletic Council here shortly about study tables to replace the first one-week suspension for eligibility. That will be coming to the board as a revision to the plan year that we have quite shortly. Possible leadership group is being explored, being developed here by the Athletic Council and the coaches. And then encouraging team rules for each one of the teams to have maybe some rules more detailed than what's in the athletic policy, along with penalties for not following those team rules. That was a report. Are there any questions?
All right, I'm going to pass this on to Dr. Trump for the superintendent's board.
All right, well, I want to start off with just welcoming our students this evening. I'd like to see all of our faculty and students join us. Hope you find the evening informative. And I also want to say that you want to take whatever your notes are and you will sign those off prior to going into executive session. So you'll be able to be dismissed at that time. Next thing I just wanted to highlight was the aspect of Tropic Music School this last weekend. I know a number of you participated in that, and I really enjoyed it, but it was kind of the talk of the town. Everybody thought it was a tremendous performance, and I know it took a lot of effort to have it at that level. So thank you for that, and we're always amazed at the talents that our students have. The other thing I want to mention was the purse auction that we had this weekend that's actually sponsored by Monroe Township, and that's for our Linto on Us program. And it was a tremendous turnout. About 250 people came to that. A number of our buildings provided support through that, either through donations or through other purses that could be auctioned. And so we're just kind of waiting to see what the tally was, but it was a fun, fun day. And it truly takes the day by the time you get the auction done. And our very own Mr. Gaymor was the auctioneer. So it's a great piece and it's a great way to support our community and certainly our students over the summer. Moving into bus inspection, just wanted to mention that we're very proud of the aspect that our fleet of 24 are now all inspected, and that's for the 2019, 2020 year. Our low head schedule, and they begin now because they go across the state. Those districts that are most successful and good to work with, they seek them out, and they're on that list. So we're fortunate they did the first half in this last week and do the second half. Special thank you to Mr. Blessing, who happens to be our maintenance person that does a great job with the proactive and preventative maintenance on our buses. And then also Jane Thompson, who is our director of transportation, they do a terrific job. Business advisory council, on the 8th, we had our job fair that was here at the high school. We had 16 local area businesses, and eight of more of those actually have jobs available for age 16 and above. So that's nice. In the past, a lot of those jobs were really for summer, were for 18-year-olds. So they branched that out, and there's some new regulations that allow them to do that. I was pleased with the participation of our students over the large periods and the interaction with our local businesses, and they felt very encouraged. And a number of them also provide opportunities for job shadowing. So it's been an opportunity for career exploration. And I really want to thank our businesses for taking the time to send representatives to do that for us. And into facilities update. On March 18th, we had our community engagement. That was the fiscal aspect of our upcoming construction and bond issue that will be on May 7th. Mr. Stevens, our treasurer, was the key speaker that evening, and we had a nice turnout. And I think that there were a lot of questions answered. There were some great visuals. All of that is on our website. It's on our main page. There was a blog that has, it's black in tone, that it actually says buildings and facilities in our K through 5 construction and renovation. If you click on that, there's a menu on the side, and you're able to see videos of our engagements as well as slide shows. So anyone in our community or student body, if you're interested in that, there's a lot of great information there. We do have coffee chats that are on point, and we have one of those this Thursday, and that will be at 9:30 at Grounds for Pleasure. So anyone in the community that would like to join us, we'd be glad to sit down and personally talk with you about facilities. And then our next community engagement is Tuesday, April the 5th, and that will be at 6:30 PM, and that will be at LT Ball. For now, we give to personnel, and I will hand it over to Mr. G.
Okay, tonight we have two folks to introduce. Mr. Burbacher, I think, was at the last meeting, so we'll let him go first. He was football coach, now he's also going to be an intervention specialist for us. So Matt, we'll let you introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Matt Burbacher, 1995 graduate. So you seniors, I was here 24 years ago at a board meeting. It was awesome. I got great notes, and it's impacted me the last 24 years of my life, so take good notes. I've been here a month as the head football coach, and the more I'm here, the more it feels like back like I'm at home. I made a leap of faith, and that faith, it's coming true. So every day that I'm here, I feel more comfortable, and I absolutely love this place. Granted, I graduated down the street at the old high school, but still, this place, Tip City, is something special, and I'm very glad and proud to be back here as your intervention specialist and head football coach. So I promise my wife and kids will be around all the time. I know I've been to two board meetings. My son was at the last one, practice and all that fun stuff that young kids like to do. That takes up my wife's time and my time, but I'm here tonight. So, but again, thank you, guys. Thank you to the board, and thank you to the Tip City community for having me back.
Thank you, Mr. Burbacher, and here with his family, and I won't say anything, but he's really kind of stealing the show. She, that's right, she's kind of stealing the show, looking up here and smiling at me. So, Mr. Zirkel, go ahead.
My name is Lou Zirkel. This is my wife Cassie and our daughter Lucy. I'm a 2010 graduate of Tropicum High School, 2013 graduate born, we stayed at university where I got my degree in education. I've had some opportunities to teach since graduating. I've done some things with Detroit City Schools, and even here in Tip City, I was an intervention specialist aide. I've been a coach of track, basketball, a number of sports. And then most recently, I took on the long-term substitute position in the history department here at the high school where I was teaching pop culture, sociology, and world history. I'm looking forward to continuing to work with these students, continuing to share some of my knowledge, my passion for not only history, but just doing my best to ensure that they are well-rounded adults when they graduate from this place. I'm looking forward to see what all they do. Thank you to the board, thank you, Dr. Trump, and just everybody for their support in this process.
Thank you, Mr. Zirkel.
I'm going to let our, you may excuse it this time if you'd like, I know you've got busy evenings and family lives, so thank you for coming on this evening.
I also would like to welcome kids who are here to the board meeting, and it makes your life change, if you don't know. So enjoy it, and do remember to get your papers signed, or you'll be coming back looking for someone probably tomorrow or another day. But enjoy tonight. And I'm getting ready to introduce our team. This is our science curriculum. And for those of you who are out there, each year we take a different discipline, and we look at it, we review it, make some changes, and prepare for the next six years. If, I don't know if you've noticed, high school doesn't turn as noticeable sometimes that we've changed curriculum. Last year it was math, the year before it was ELA, and the year before it was some of the different family consumer sciences and some of those. This year with science, we take a team, someone from each grade level, and we really look at the standards. That's what we have to teach to. That's also what gets assessed at the end for you guys. It's the end-of-course exams. Does anybody know the only science end-of-course exam in high school? You guys should know. Biology, good. That's the only one, and we have fifth grade, eighth grade, and then high school is biology. Not as tested as some of the other areas. But on the team this year, I had a wonderful time. Science is something I love. It's what I taught the majority of, and enjoyed doing it, and really enjoyed the process that we went through. So I'm going to introduce the team. We're kind of segregated here, but that's okay. We've got elementary over here, middle school, high school over here, so we'll start. We were missing one person, and that's Cassie Shock. Mrs. Shock is, she had a baby, so we allowed her to stay home, and she'll be back here before too long. So let's start with kindergarten. We have Katie Scott as our kindergarten person. Yeah, you can stand up so I can all see you. Angie Anderson, our first-grade teacher. Jessica Marge, second-grade teacher. And Beth Blitzer, third-grade teacher. Kathy Litten, our fourth-grade teacher. Beth Hanks, our fifth-grade teacher. And over here for sixth grade, we have Mr. Sandberry. Seventh grade is Mrs. Shock, and Mrs. Helstine for eighth grade. And then our three high schools are Mr. Tyler Hauntman, Mr. Darren Brown, and Mr. Ryan Trentblatt. So let's give them a hand for their hard work. One of the first things we did, I'm going to take over, I'm going to do the first few slides here, then I'm going to turn it over to the different groups. And Google Slides is really a great thing, because we shared this all, they can do their input, and we work on this collaboratively. And we really looked at what is our vision, and you'll see that although we want our kids to do well on tests, that's something we want, but we didn't put that up here as something that is really our focus. Our focus is for you to enjoy science and to become better critical thinkers, is really what a lot of it is. We wanted better understanding of the world around it, and this kind of starts out at kindergarten. You see the standards in kindergarten, and then we move up through being seniors in AP classes. They look a little different. The vocabulary looks a lot different. But we want you to actually, to actively engage in the process of scientific discovery. We want you to do hands-on things, especially at the elementary. That was a focus on really making sure that we get kids that can discover and learn, and that they love learning through the hands-on exploration. And the words that we put up there, wonder, observe, investigate, and analyze, those ended up in our word bank over here. You can see that. We just put in the words and kind of let them pop up as the things that we wanted to be in there. Depths of knowledge, that's something that you've heard of Bloom's Tag on Sound, especially our board members. That's used to be, used a lot. Now we use depth of knowledge kind of in our questioning. And then just really critical thinking and reasoning are the things that we really wanted to look into. And tonight, we're not going to ask you to approve the materials, but we are going to share with you the process, because we have evaluated them. We actually started last spring. Our team looked at them over the summer, decided what they wanted to pilot and really look at. And so we'll go through that and talk just a little bit about the process we went through. The new standards were adopted in 2018, so just last year, February of 2018. They're to be rolled out by 2020. Now, ODE, sometimes they said we were going to test it then, now they've changed it. They'll probably push it back around here. That doesn't surprise us. One thing that you'll see, and the board members got the 80-some pages of curriculum maps.
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three, thank you. I was counting. Did you see me look right at you, because I was counting on it, for you to come up with exactly how many pages there were? But ODE actually took out some parts with the inquiry and the application, so those weren't actually in the standards. We felt like that is a huge part of what the standards are, so we left them on our maps, and they're there. It's Tip City. You saw the TC in there. So we felt like that's really an important part of that process. And then ODE, and I will admit, I was a little bit skeptical of their model curriculum, because they have done it for ELA and math, and they roll them out slowly. They're actually really good. Some of the things that they're putting in there, the model curriculum is not something you adopt, it's just ideas that you can use. They're not things that you have to use, but there are ideas to be used and instructed. We are not a STEM school, and I think we talked about this several times. We are not a STEM school, but we do want to have some of that STEM focus, especially in the younger grades where the activities are STEM-related, where they're doing hands-on, they're doing the problem-solving type activities that STEM does, the building of things. And so into the curriculum, the things that we looked at, we made sure that was a part of it, and a real strong part of it. I thought this was, it seems like it's really expensive. When we adopt materials, we're like, ooh, that's a lot of money, but I was shocked. Actually, I'm going to give Mr. Sandberry credit for this, because we were talking in our meeting, we're like, we need to stay within budget. We are looking at things, and we're in budget, and we did the math, and he was doing the math quickly. He said, you know, that's about $16, $17 a kid per year. So under $20, we're doing our science materials for each student. I thought that was, I would have thought it was more. We also want to make sure that it is sustainable. That's something we've talked about a lot, that we're doing this for six years. Not only are teachers who are here and are going to be here, but when we bring in new staff and people, they can jump right in and be able to use it throughout the entire cycle. We analyze test scores, and we also evaluate surveys as we went through this process. So that's where that part is. Evaluating materials, something that we did for the first time three years ago was we had a vendor fair at Miami County ESC, the first time it was here. And we had two different school districts, actually a third one kind of was involved. This year, it was huge. It was crowded. We went to the ESC, we had nine different vendors, and they loved coming. I didn't know that until I got a lot of emails back. We had 10 districts, we had 53 attendees. It was a really neat event. And then we chose some companies to come present in our own facility, so we had some of those come. We have an electronic evaluation tool that is used, and actually had several other districts as we were using it come over and ask me, and Mr. Sagon, I have to give him credit, because he's the one that helped us develop the electronic tool, so that we don't have a whole bunch of papers, and we can put it in charge, so it's easy to read. And now, I'm going to allow, I'm going to stop talking, and I'm going to turn it over to my team, and they either are going to both do it, or whoever's in it, or it looks like Mrs. Blitzer might be the spokesperson for Katie Truett.
Are you ready to advance?
Yeah, I'm ready. Okay, so when we looked at our materials, some of the things that we wanted to make sure was we had integration within our grade-level things at the elementary level. We do not only just specific content area, but we also integrate lots of things cross-curricular, so we wanted to make sure that that was an option. We wanted to make sure it was STEM-infused, and then also that it offers a lot of integration for our high-level readers, low-level readers. And then the DOK Mr. G already talked about. And then we also wanted to make sure that the scientific vocabulary was enhanced, because that's the foundation, the building blocks for the kids at this young level, so that when they get older, they've heard those words before. The first thing that we would like to propose that we adopt is kind of like a newspaper, a periodical, studies weekly. It always has higher-level thinking questions at all levels. It's integrated with ELA, because there's online assessment, there's reading comprehension pieces that go with it. There's student-teacher online additions, and then there's also the four Cs involved with each activity and the labs that are in there. And then the last thing that we talked about that we really liked was mystery science. It's a hands-on, STEM-infused, interactive, online piece that the kids can get online and do. The teachers can log in, they can do interactive labs, they can stop the lab at any point and ask the students questions and check for clarification. And we just felt like that it would enhance our curriculum as well as give those kids some national curiosity.
Hello, this is Katie and I, who are representatives for the fourth and fifth grade. And we're very happy to be here tonight to present what we have worked on over the year. And we both love science.
We do. We love science.
So we are very thrilled to teach it to our students and have them explore and learn and come to love science like we do.
No, I was just wondering if the students kind of could think back to fifth grade and think about that first time you did that independent science experiment, you know? You, that was probably the first time you did something formally, and it stressed your parents out. We got lots of emails. But, you know, this is the reason we do it, because it's all these fun things, and, you know, I was thinking back tonight about that. It's really just an opportunity for us to come together, so thank you.
The first question I always get in fourth grade is, are we blowing anything up? And the answer is, not intentionally. So our goals for this year were to make sure that we updated and made our curriculum align to the Ohio New Learning Standards.
We implement the five Es. You know what they are. They're engage, explore, elaborate, explain, evaluate. It's really important that we do that throughout the entire process, the entire year.
It's the aim among fourth and fifth-grade teachers to make sure that science is cross-curricular, where we include math and non-viction reading activities within all the topics that we teach.
We try to enhance scientific vocabulary. Vocabulary across the board is super important, and so we try to make sure that we hit every level for the students.
And as Mr. Gaymor said, we are not a STEM school, but we, as a staff, are really working hard at starting to include more STEM and engineering process activities with our students, and they really enjoy it.
We do differential inquiry, and then, as you'll see on the next slide, we do standardized test prep, because fifth grade is the first year that students get tested in science. And you'll notice that fifth grade does very well. Our students are, I thank you, Katie, three teachers for prepping them in reading. It's extremely important they can do that, and it makes our job easier, and as you can see, we were well above what the state did, so.
We're very proud of our fifth-grade teachers to come up with these results. Technology is really a real part of our science classrooms. Google Classroom. And one of our science teachers in fourth grade received a grant, and he was awarded that grant, and was able to purchase these virtual reality goggles, which we are hoping to get up and working before the end of this year and definitely next year.
And then just update lab equipment as we, you know, reach the students. There are more things that we need, and we need to update what we have for them, so.
So we did have our vendor fair, and these were all the things that we looked at, the different resources that we looked at. The fourth and fifth grade did do a pilot with Pearson this year, and it helped us sort of realize that maybe that a textbook was something we wanted to go with. And finally, we decided from all these choices that we're going to, it's in the next.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I missed the cue.
That we're going with the whole thing with the hardcore Ohio Science Fusion. And we have lots of resources we'll be able to use with our students and be able to hit those goals that we had for ourselves that we've set up. The other choice we're also using.
Oh, we're going to, we'll continue with Discovery and through the streaming, and then mystery science, like K through three. We really enjoyed the little snippets and the hands-on. It was really effective, so we feel really fortunate. We have all those things that we can utilize here in Tip City, so thank you.
All right. Middle school. So in looking at our curriculum, we wanted to start by recognizing some of the good things we're doing. So one big thing that we're especially proud of over the past three years is our rise in ARPU scores. We've gone from 70% proficient to this past year, 80% proficient, so that's a rise in 10 percentage points. Some other good things we've done, and I've only been here for four years, so a lot of this stuff is brand-new stuff that's just started, that we've started implementing to kind of enhance science just since I've started. Another one is the Women in STEM Expo at Edison Community College. Formally, we are IT. We send girls there, I'd say like 20 girls there every year. We send eighth-grade girls. We have science fair. Similar to LT, we got the virtual reality goggles, especially for our earth science curriculum to kind of make it more immersive, so we can travel all over the world and see some of the effects of plate tectonics or erosion and deposition. And we also have added a couple of science electives. We have environmental science with Mr. Coopman, our coop dog. You have design thinking, and we have an inquiry class with Mr. Earl. So, the next one? So in looking at what our curriculum wanted to be, a lot of it kind of aligns with what other people have said already, what Mr. G said, LT Ball said. We want to give students an authentic science experiment experience while also having the rigor, and we do have a state test, so covering the standards well and all of that, and the technology. So we are recommending Fusion, kind of going through that process. It's the Hope, Hope and Mithland Hardcore. Fusion's Ohio-aligned curriculum, so if you go back. We are recommending Fusion because, A, it's aligned to Ohio's standards, so there's only two curriculums that are offered that are aligned specifically to Ohio. The rest are mostly aligned to the national standards. And while the national standards are very similar to Ohio's standards, they are different. So we wanted something that was specifically Ohio, so we didn't have to deal with all those little books. High school, you probably remember all the books, sharing them. We wanted one book. It's rigorous. We wanted inquiry and STEM components, and online components that teachers can go in, and it's an easy-to-use interface for both students and teachers, and Fusion offers that. Something I especially like is for, they have a whole lab manual with inquiry and STEM components, and these aren't your cookie cutter labs you find every time you Google search "lab" on erosion or something like that. They are inquiry-based. Students have choice in them, and something I like is that they're all editable. So, you know, when your copy budget's kind of stressing you out a little bit, you can make it a little smaller if you want. I know that copy code thing, but that stresses me out. Technology integration is another one. Fusion offers VR expeditions. Fusion makes their own, or Hope and Mithland Hardcore makes their own. So it's a little daunting to try to find the expeditions, and since we have these amazing goggles, why not pick a curriculum that offers that as well? And then, like I said, we don't want to teach to the test, but we do have an eighth-grade test, and that is a result presented to the community, a result with my name on it. So we also wanted some test prep materials that came with it, and they offer for the eighth grade some test preparation with like very strong visuals and diagrams, very similar to the ARPU that's offered, so.
Gail, they have to be behind the podium.
I need them behind the podium.
Mrs. Robbins would like you behind the podium, because she can't track where you're going. Those were the hand signals I was getting.
All right, crap me behind the podium. Okay, good to go. So basically, at the high school level, we have used majority Pearson, and we're probably going to go similar to that. going to go similar to that, but in the meantime, let's talk about where we're at. Curriculum-wise, most of our, all of our students take biology as freshmen, and then they either take physical science and chemistry as sophomore. The 85% of our students take chemistry, either an accelerated or a CP level, and then after their sophomore year, those 85% can pursue a higher-level science courses their junior and senior year, all taught out of college textbooks. So, they're, when they get to college, they're going to be exposed to those college textbooks already, they've got a leg up in the game of everybody they're going against at other schools. So, we have accelerated courses in biology and chemistry, which takes things a little bit quicker, and then we have many AP courses that are full-weighted and the accelerated are half-weighted. So, that's kind of our curriculum, that's our flow chart that you would find in the student course of studies that you can review. So, that's it for that. So, what's working and what do we want to do? So, basically, what we want to do is we've found that we want to challenge our students to, not just with just learning the concepts, we want to apply the concepts through their lab experiences. So, we do a lot of probe-based labs. Right now, we use basically everything we do, at least in physics, we do almost everything we collect, very rarely do we read anything by hand that comes in digitally. We also use web-based support for our textbook already, we use mastering in a lot of our L levels. And then if we go with the curriculum that we recommend, then you'll have Realize and Mastering right in a row from freshman all the way through senior. So, they'll have an online segment to what we would like to do. We also like to create creativity and self-reliance through the Science Fair, and our participation in that's been pretty good. We're going to try to encourage more and more science students to do that. So, that's kind of what we're doing now, so. This is what some students have said, I'm not going to read the quotes, I assume you guys can read them. Basically, there's some things in there that say, you know, I think we can do things better, but what we're doing is pretty good now, and there's always room for improvement. So, those are the things that we're looking to do. One of the things we're looking to improve upon is using our own personal devices as the collection tool for our data. So, we're looking to probably write a, we're getting into a grant now that's going to have probes that are Bluetooth to the cell phones and to laptops or iPads, that our students can bring their own device, collect the data, and carry it home. So, that's going to be kind of what people do in the real world, and that's what we want to do, so. All right, this is our, and of course, exam. Our biology program for the last two years has had two years in a row of very tragic consequences. And as you can see, our test scores have dropped a bit in the last two years, and, but I'm going to tell you right now, they're still above state standards, including all those things that have happened. So, I think I look for good things to happen in the next two years where they're going to come up, because we're going to get some stability here. So, I think that's kind of where we're at. We're looking to like analyze questions, we get data from the students, we can see which student, which question, where our students are performing the lowest, and we can like actually go in and say, "Okay, we need to do a better job with this particular area or that." So, we break down these questions routinely, and the biology teachers are sharing a plan period, and they meet this period off, what is it, once a month?
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah, they meet once a month, and they actually talk about strategies of what they can do to get this better. So, I look for those scores to start to climb dramatically in the next year. All right, so these are the books that we recommend that you would, okay, for the next year. All of them are Pearson, all of them have either Realize or, or, gosh, I lost it, Mastering. And, use it, I lost it. But for the first two courses, Chemistry and Biology, will be Realize, which is kind of a high school level of mastering. Mastering is something that if you're at Ohio State, in science, you're going to be using Mastering again. So, this is something that's used in college all the time. The only textbook up there that is not Pearson is the Environmental Science, they've elected to go with that one. So, that's kind of what we are asking to do, and those will be available for you to take a look at at your convenience in the next month or so. All right. Our electives, again, after your sophomore year, it's fully, full of electives. So, not everything's weighted. Accelerated Biology and Accelerated Chem are that halfway grade for those freshmen and sophomores. And then AP Biology, AP Chem, and Advanced Physics are all full-weighted grades. The non-weighted electives, still taught out of college textbooks, are Human Anatomy and Physiology, CP Earth's Environment, and then regular physics. That's kind of our program. So, after they get to their sophomore year, they're going to be exposed to college textbooks and college-level thinking right out the door. So, hopefully where they go, they have some success. Thank you. Let's give our teachers another hand. I appreciate, we sent surveys out to high school graduates, and we got 78 back, which was awesome. And really appreciated what they had to say, because they were pretty honest. We did have one person that was pretty disappointed that we didn't spend more time doing marine biology and going to the ocean to do some, you know, exploration there. Like, we live in Ohio, it's a long way to the ocean, but we'll work on that, we'll look closer. So, thank you, Board members, it was a good evening, and thank you, staff members, for your work this year, I greatly appreciate it. And I think we're all done. Board members, do you have any questions? Thank you, and I'll switch back over later.
All right. Thank you, teaching staff, for being here this evening and watching our busy schedule, so if you'd like to excuse it, it's time to serve again. Thanks for coming.
Okay, we're up to item four on the Agenda Citizens Conference. As I mentioned, there are a couple of books here you'd like to address the board. First up on this is Ms. Linda Harris. Come on up. Just a quick reminder, we do, as part of our policy, with this segment, limit the time to five minutes, so just a reminder. If I cut you off, I'm not trying to recruit, I'm not trying to...
Andy, you only push the button?
Yeah.
Okay, well, my name is Linda Harris, and I am the chairman of the bond issue coming up. We will have that election on May 7th. I'd just like to come and give the board and everybody an update of what the committee is doing. And first of all, though, I just want to say that I feel like the committee that's come together by the interested citizens is just a blessed group of people. I think they're passionate, and I think they love our schools, and that includes our wonderful Board of Education, who's been coming to the meetings, giving me wonderful input and guidance, I'm very thankful for that. So, just an update from the last time, I do have a co-chairman now, her name is Kirsten Hutton. We decided that we are going to be putting out signs, we're going to be putting them out on April 6th. If you are interested in having a sign for your yard, there is a signup document on Facebook that you can go and ask for a sign. Let's see, we have talked about having a bigger presence on Facebook, so we're going to be blasting out more information on that. We're going to also have a committee or subcommittee that's working on letters to the editor, and so, yeah, we'll look out for those. This past weekend, we were at the purse auction, and we gave out this flyer, and it just talks about the bond levy, the master plan highlights, why we love this plan, what are the costs, important dates. And we had 50 printed up, and we only had one person decline to accept our flyer. And I thought that was pretty awesome. That doesn't mean everybody that took one, you know, but still, it was a positive reception. It was just awesome. Our next major event is going to be at the Taste of Tip on March, I mean, April 25th. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Next is Ben and John Lynn Collins.
Oh, good evening, I'm Ben Collins, my wife is over there, kids are somewhere in the background there. Really, just coming tonight, we're moving back into the area from out of state. We lived in Tip City from 2013 to 2017. Due to my job, it moved me out of the area, but we're coming back in. Kids have spent a couple of years in the school district, really like it and enjoy it. Unfortunately, we're just faced with a little bit of a dilemma, we're trying to build a house, we've got a contract to build. The current policy for getting into the schools is the waiver, which only allows us 90 days. And right now, our builder has us at six months until we're in, which is sometime in September. So, I guess we're just, we've emailed and worked with the school superintendent, trying to get something finalized, and just wondering if you could review and possibly extend that to more of a six-month period. 90 days to build a home is pretty incredible, I'm not sure how it happens, but just wondering if you can consider that.
I'm Shirley Snyder, I'm with Calvary Realtors, helping the college in finding a home. I know how many of you know how difficult it is to find temporary housing in Tip City or permanent housing in Tip City or anywhere really you might be going. But when we went into this, I have never heard of 90 days, and neither had the other agent. We were pouring out a lot of words, like, amazing, you know, we don't understand this. So, the reason I'm here is just to find out what is the best way to take this back to the Board of Realtors, to let them know, if you think you have people that want to move to Troy or Tip City to have children, you can't do it in Tip City to build a house. And I know there's other schools, Troy will let them in, but it's hard on the kids. And all the classes I've ever taken with relocation companies, they suggest that you go ahead, get the kids in school at the end of the year, so they have the summer to make friends, and they have a better start for the coming school year. And it's just changed, and so I'm not used to this, and it's really hard to get people's hopes up that, yes, they can go to Tip City School where their kids were in school before and find a home that they have to build, because they can't find an existing home, and then find that you have to put your kids in another school system such as, they've already been in one school system out of state, now they'll have to go into Troy's school system for the remainder of this year, and then into Tip City, even though they'll be living in another community such as Troy or wherever this particular place is, Troy. So, I just would like to have some kind of clarification. I think when I talked to Dr. Camp, she just mentioned that it would come up over the summer, we wouldn't know anything, but I'd like, if we could just get something that I can take back to the Board of Education that represents all of our area, including Van Delia and, you know, other surrounding areas other than Miami County, it would help us, because it's really hard when you get people out, taking their time and their time to show them homes and communities, and we all know that Tip City is a great community to begin, and then everyone's disappointed. Yes, and clarification on that, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you to everyone who gave those comments, we're up to the President's comments. Just a couple of things to say to address Ms. Snyder and the Collinses. Again, thank you for bringing those concerns to us, we do appreciate hearing that, and this is something that we can consider. Obviously, if it's, if we're looking to change our policy, it's not something we can do one night or something like that, there are a lot of things we have to take into consideration and really think about it, but, you know, unless we hear from you guys and know about it, we don't know to do that. So, it is an important step they took tonight, we do appreciate you coming and providing that information to us, and obviously, we'll certainly take that under consideration. Thank you. Also, just very quickly, I want to just say my personal thanks to the, to the curriculum committee for their presentation, their hard work tonight, I don't know, most of them took off, I don't know, but somebody passed on our names. That's really wonderful information for us. Also, I want to thank the administration for, you know, all the work they're doing, getting information out on the levy. You know, we had another, as Dr. Camp mentioned, two-day meeting session the other night, I loved that really, really well. Steven's presenting a lot of great information on, you know, how the levy will work and what the impact will be on, on taxes here. I'm not sure I can remember a levy where there's been more sort of transparent information out there on what the impact will be, so I feel comfortable that the citizens will be very well informed on this one, and that's, that's really good. So, thank you to everybody for that, and also thank you to Ms. Harris as well. That's all I've got, I lost my place on the agenda, I have to remember by now what I'll do next, but... Approval of minutes, yes. Okay, thank you.
No, I'm good, man.
All right, we need a motion for approval of the minutes.
I'll move, second.
All right, so we moved and seconded to approve the minutes, these are the minutes of the February 25th, right now. Any discussion? No discussion?
It was just one meeting, it was a little easier this time.
All right, we're ready for vote. Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Ventures?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Riley 7, the Treasury report. Turn it back over to 12, I guess first I'm going to, better A here, I'll, I'm just going to motion to approve the bond and financial report.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
A move in second, the levy, and we're in, any discussion?
I would just like to add, in January meeting, we were discussing the taxes, revenue for the taxes, it was, it looked like the number may be falling a little short. February still only received advances from the county auditor's office, but we did receive everything else in March of this month, and we came out a little bit higher than what was budgeted. So, county auditors had a good, good estimate, and we did meet that estimate. Also, just an additional note, outside of the financial report, but we did have our 2018 financial audit, we did have a clean audit, and we did receive the state auditor's award for having that clean audit. Any questions that I can answer concerning the audit, the financial report in February?
All right, no further discussion, if you can go ahead and vote.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Moving on to the D E incorporation, we're looking to approve that.
I'll second.
It was just one, it shouldn't even say amendments, it was an amendment, one item.
All right, very good. No further discussion, ready for the roll call.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Ventures?
Yes.
Moving on to the first quarter certification, then and now, your thing looking at that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded, Duell and Corinne. Any discussion?
I'll just state, there's one item, and it was actually kind of an invoice to say your renewal is coming up. I don't consider it true then and now, but because of the dates, we're just covering ourselves for what the auditors may interpret. So that's all.
Is this subscription service?
Yes.
Okay. Ready for a vote? Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Ventures?
Yes. And that motion is approved.
Okay. Item A, approval of tax, raise of tax for 2019. Most no approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded, Sam and Corinne. Any discussion on this? This is just a listing of what we're collecting today.
Correct.
Authorized.
Correct. This is the county auditor's estimate for calendar year 2019. I reviewed the numbers, and I agree with what they have here.
I know it's already been signed by the county board.
That is correct. Once this is approved, then all of the board members will get a chance to sign two copies of this document. One will be kept in our possession. The other will be forwarded to the county auditor's office. So please don't leave without signing it.
All right. I think we're ready for a roll call. Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Ventures?
Yes. And that motion is approved.
The next, I don't often do this whole business. Hopefully, we have a new year. Anyone have the whole business to... Very good. We'll move on to business. I'll pass on to Dr. Kump.
New business, item A. Recommend approval to accept following retirements. That's Art Paul, meeting supervisor effective 12/31/19, and Jane Thompson, transportation supervisor effective 9/31/19.
So moved. Congratulations to our retirees. Appreciate their service over the time of this.
I'll second. I can vote.
Okay. Moved and seconded, Sam and Duell. Any other discussion?
I would just say that they have done, both of them have done an outstanding job for our district. And in a time now, we have some time, but we will look for, once again, some wonderful individuals that will be committed, hopefully, at the level they have been.
Okay. We're ready for a vote then.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Ventures?
Yes. And that motion is approved.
I'd be recommend approval to accept the following resignations. That's Katie Barker, Devon Coffee, as a principal. That's February 7/31/19. Mary Kate Souter, L.A., Belle. She's second grade Broadway teacher. That's February 8/31/19. And Alyssa Studebaker. That's Devon Coffee, the Broadway, as teachers' aide, the traveling teachers' aide, 8/22/19.
I'll move. I'll second.
Okay. Moved and seconded, Corinne and Theresa. Any discussion?
Just, once again, appreciate their service and their dedication to our district.
Okay. We're ready for a vote. Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Ventures?
Yes.
And that motion is approved.
I'd see recommend approval to hire Ellen DeWarr as a substitute for the 2018/19 school year for the quality certification and paperwork.
The motion is approved. So moved.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded, Sam and Duell. Any discussion?
It's always good to have another substitute. This person, Kat, who confessed earlier, is now coming back. And it is a busy time for schools between some of the flu season going on, as well as the business towards spring. So we appreciate her coming back on board.
Mr. Stevens, if you need to... No further discussion. Go ahead.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Ventures?
Yes. And that motion is approved.
This is I'd be recommend approval to hire long-term substitute teacher Allison Staley as a certified teacher on limited contract while she completes her 60th day of teaching in the same position. Her 60th day is estimated to be April 16, 2019. Therefore, her effective date is April 17, 2019.
I'll move. I'll second.
Moved and seconded, Corinne and Duell. Any discussion?
She's serving as middle school math science teacher right now as Mrs. Shaw is on the...
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Ventures?
Yes. That motion is approved.
Item E. Recommend approval to qualified teachers on limited contract for the 2019/2020 year for spending top certification and paperwork. That's Matthew Brubaker and Luca Cerbo.
So moved.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded by, well, moved by Sam and Corinne, and then seconded by Corinne. So ready for any discussion? All right. Very kind. We're ready for a vote.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Ventures?
Yes. That motion is approved.
Item S, recommend approval of the attached 2020/2021 calendar, the school calendar.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, Duell and Corinne. Any discussion on the calendar?
I just want to thank the district calendar committee. We have certified, classified parents, as well as administration. As parents, we had Mrs. Kelly Carter and also Mrs. Sarah Adams join us for this. And it is, we try to have calendars ahead just for families, as well as our district planning services. And we'll be in process as early as December.
So I do have a question on this. The bond levy has us, you know, summertime, doing a number of things, trying to make sure we're ready to move into building. Does the calendar take into effect that? Or do we anticipate that there could be some changes to the calendar based on the levy campaign and the schedule?
Very good suggestion. And we discussed this at the calendar committee. This is an ideal calendar for a regular year. So as we get, when we get our bonds passed, the calendar committee knows that there will be a re-meeting of the group and also discussion with our board, as well as our facility team, or district facility team. And also looking at if there's anything that may push that date back a little bit, maybe starting more of your Laker Day on that given year. So we just will look at that, construction, preparation, again, the need at that time. But yes, there is a very good chance that this will be adjusted as we get closer.
Thank you.
There's a typo on it, a big one.
You got a typo?
Yep. In March.
On the actual calendar, Mrs. Ross. Okay.
March 3/29 to Friday 1/2, I think needs to be four.
Four, two, March. Step one, two. So we'll note that the intention there, April second, rather than January second.
Well, the spring break, I was bet.
Right.
Got it.
Okay. No other discussion? I think Mr. Stevens is already for the roll call.
You need one moment?
Sure.
With that, no corrections.
Okay. It was a good try, but it's robbing the topic.
And then there's actually another one. It's a good edit.
All right.
Any other questions? Anything made on it? Not with date.
Now, we're ready to go. Mr. Ventures?
Okay.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Ventures?
Yes. That motion is approved.
I'd be recommend adoption of the science curriculum, maps, and scanners for the 2019/2020 school year.
I'll move. I'll second.
Okay. Moved and seconded, Corinne and Theresa. Any discussion? Again, thank you for the presentation. They did a great job. Yeah.
I just want to know that we're saying that we are adopting it for this year, but it is about a six-year rotation.
Right.
When does the purchase begin of the first year?
After July 1st. And so we will, this is approving the curriculum, and then either April or May, we'll bring to you, which we've gone through, we'll bring to you the budget and exactly what we're purchasing. And then we can't purchase it until after July 1st. It's on next year's budget.
Right. Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
I can tweak it.
We do have, our current general fund budget is scheduled to transfer the money from the general fund regular to the science curriculum fund later in either May or June of this year. So we could start purchasing a little early. If we can get some price breaks, that'd be even better.
Do you want to do this, or is this the original one? Check our faculty, is this still the same one?
These, we didn't change it on the...
Okay.
We fixed it, but we didn't change it on here just because it was last minute.
Okay. Just make sure.
And we can send you a clean copy if you'd like, of course, too.
I trust you. But I still see the same mistake.
Yes. And when it's posted on our website, it will be clean.
Okay. I think they will look at it.
The spelling errors will be clean.
Is that okay?
Yep.
You'll send it to me?
Be happy to.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? Whenever you're ready, we are ready to roll call.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Ventures?
Yes. That motion is approved.
I'd page recommend approval for 2019/2020 student athletic and parent handbook.
I'll move.
Second.
It's moved and seconded by Sam and Corinne. Any discussion?
I just want to mention that there was that insertion of on page six about sportsmanship. And that is in your piece, it also addressed the Miami Valley League, which updates that for us. Mr. Pauskin, did you want to add one out?
Yeah. Just that with the recent decline of officials, and I think a large part of that is because of sportsmanship. Parents, fans, coaches, and players, basically harassing officials. So we're adopting with the league, if you are ejected from an event, that there is a free course on nfjesslearn.com that you have to take before you're able to come back to an event. Obviously, it's free of charge, but it is something on sportsmanship. There's one for coaches and parents, and then one for the student athletes on sportsmanship. Also, as the smoking apparatus has evolved, year by year, we have to make sure that we put on in our handbook every single one. So if you see on the drums of tobacco that you have e-cigs, Jules, vape pens, all the fun things.
Nicotine, too fixed? Don't forget about nicotine, too fixed?
Yeah. Eventually, animals, I'm sure. But so we've updated that part as well. We've updated that part. And then along with us going into a new conference, we had to change out all the conference verbiage in that packet to MBL 7G1.
So is the league giving you any guidance on how to enforce that?